I'm used to sitting over there.
Have a little roller. So I'm doing back to front. He can't do front to back. He just sticks his arms and legs out in canics. Gets to his belly and it has a meltdown because he doesn't want to be there and I roll him back and he goes right back over and I'm like.
All the fun. One of the guys I work with, they're expecting their first and yesterday his wife called him about, I don't know, four ten. And then he got all hushed and he's like, but are you okay? And then I was like, so he was like, and like he packed up his computer and it was running out and I'm like, is everything alright? He goes, well. She just went to her doctor's appointment and there's. I'll tell you later. Everything was fine.
Let's call this, we have a five township planning commission to order. First thing on the agenda is the call to order. Second is approval of the agenda. Any changes requested, additions, deletions? And I'll just say that under item six, other business and announcements, there are a couple of things. I'm going to talk a little about the where Tom is. There's zoning reform toolkit that you received. I just want to have a little discussion on that. But other than that, anything else? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the agenda as written, say aye. Okay, next thing is minutes from our last meeting. Yes.
Was there a motion for an approval of the agenda? There was no.
I think we need a new chair. Have a motion. One second, let's take that vote again. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. And thank you staff. Now we're on to the minutes. They had no directions. They're pretty short.
Yeah, I didn't see any either.
So let's have a motion. Second. Further discussion. So all in favor, vote aye. Aye. Thank you. Next is a public comment period, which is the. Anybody in the audience here is allowed to address us. You have about three minutes. Now, any issue that's related to a planning commission? If you're here to comment on the item five, the public hearing on the rezoning request, please, we have a public hearing on that. So hold your comments until then. So anybody? Care to make a public comment? Okay, if not, we'll close the public comment. And now we're on to the public hearing for the zoning request. And I have a couple of comments before we get started. We are going to talk about the zoning reform toolkit later, which is has to do with housing. This rezoning has to do with housing. And densities of housing and location of housing and types of housing and. How they're all put together, what? You know, we've typically. Kind of grouped higher density. Medium density, low density, you know, kind of separated and so on. Some of the things in here talk about putting them all together. Doing more of a mix rather than a separation. So. Kind of keep. That big picture in mind. Maybe the way we're doing it isn't the way to do it. And there are some other things in there about. What they call collapsing zoning so that you take R one, two and three and put them all together and simply make some differences based on dimensions. They all, they have all the same functions, all the same uses, but you differentiate on dimensions. Kind of let that rattle around a little bit. And now I'd like to present, oh, Mika, you want to introduce first?
I can introduce briefly. I think I would like the applicant to talk about it a little more. You're familiar with the area. You're familiar with the parcel and the issues on the parcel. This is a request for an R five as opposed to an R four, which is what you heard previously. It is in alignment with the master plan. And one thing, one of your members had asked me about, and so this is why I included it in the, in the packet. There is question about. So R five is called low density, multi-family residential. And there's been some question about, because that's our highest density district. Why is it called low density? In the course of the short terminals lawsuit, discovered that there used to be an R six in Park Township in the original nineteen seventy four ordinance, which was medium density residential. So the medium density residential aligns with the highest density that's now permissible for multifamily in Holland Charter Township. It's like thirty four sixty or something like that, square feet of per unit. Yep. City of Holland for their high density, they also have some, some similar designations. Their highest density doesn't have a maximum square footage for unit. It's basically if you can meet all the other requirements, setbacks, stormwater, anything else that's required for the parcel, as many units as you can get on there, that's what their high density is. So this is our, it's, it's low density as far as high density, as far as multiple family is concerned, but it is the highest density in Park Township. So let me know if you have any questions about that, but there was a question. So I thought we could elaborate on that a little bit.
Welcome back. Sounds like it to me. That sounds like. Aim it up a little bit. We're probably good.
Wonderful. Um, so yeah, as Mika said, I think you're familiar with the site. You're familiar with the location and you're probably familiar with me by now. So, uh, yes, and apologies for bringing you on on such a nice evening. I know we're the only agenda items. You probably want to drag this out as long as possible, but. So I'll be brief as well. Right. So our previous application under the R four was done in error and I'll take the blame for that. Part of the reason, you know, Mika explained it a little bit is there's a little bit of confusing language in your ordinance. It's no excuse. You know, we, we should have known that going in. Typically, when we go to a rezone, we do an analysis, right, of what does the master plan say? The master plan very clearly identifies this area as high density residential and sort of kind of smack dab right in the middle of where Park Township has identified the high residential, the highest density residential area in the township. So I understand that you guys are going to be discussing that a little bit further, but you know, our intent is when we rezone a property to do the most appropriate and, you know, highest and best use for that site. And in this case, it's R five. So that was simply a mistake on my part to, to put down R four in the application. So we're seeking tonight is an R five. The real significant differences in that really aren't extremely significant in terms of the impact on this application. If I can talk a little bit about it and, you know, I'll be careful because I understand that, that we're not tied to a site plan with a rezone and we're not tied to any specifics, but just to let you know, the intent, you know, the, the intent is still single family residential. It's just the number of housing units that can be kind of clustered together and that gives opportunities on this site. We have a lot of constraints on this site. You know, there is sanitary sewer in a particular location, which, you know, pushing the road further is going to make it difficult and actually impossible to service a portion of it with sanitary sewer. So we need to keep that sanitary sewer closer to the road, which closer to the road, meaning one forty four, meaning shortening up our internal road. Stormwater management, of course, we need to have a stormwater pond. We also need to do as much preservation of the tree buffer as possible as well. So those are things that are important to us and I know they're important to you as well, but the R five does. Not only does it, again, meet the intent and the specifics of the master plan, but it also allows for, you know, a, a improved design. Honestly, we can have a better design of our site with the R five. So that's our intent tonight is really to just kind of come back a little bit with our table between our legs and again, apologize for bringing you in tonight if we were the only agenda item. But it's going to be an improved site because of that. I can understand how there'd be some concerns from, from some folks as to why come right back in from the R four and we understand the R four was never approved by the, the township board. So it was still sort of an open item. We wanted to catch those, do the appropriate zoning to the high density residential zoning. The R five, even though it's called something different and the R four suggests it's higher density, we all understand how the R five works. So. That's what we'd like to see tonight in compliance with the master plan.
Any questions for the applicant? We already talked about it other than. So, okay, thank you. If there are no questions. Then I would like to open the public hearing on this issue. Again, just like I said before, about three minutes. And it should relate to this issue. So. Right side, I know you guys don't think so. Anybody on the left side want to talk? Come on up. We'll need your name and your address. There should be a paper and pen up there. That's it? I'm not terribly worried about it.
My name is Mary Lou Palatas. And we live at one four five three four Twin Oaks. And we face the end of the horse. What was the horse corral?
Pull the mic down just a little bit.
Sorry. As old as I am. Moving, my question is. With the rezoning, will the houses be where the corral is now? I don't know who can answer that, but.
Well, who asks? And of course there will, before they build. You know, they'll have to come in with a plan and there'll be opportunity to comment at that point too.
Oh, we don't have a plan yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else over here care to comment?
My name is Ryan Westbrook. I live at three four three eight Butternut Drive. So we are on the very tail end of where the property is and just wondering if there's clarification. I know. Bowman can better use the property if it's zoned R five, but what is, what does better use mean? Does that mean like they can go higher? Is there, is there? Is there a lot of, lot of difference between the five or the five and the four? I mean, I, I understand the clustering houses together, this, that, but I'm wondering, you know, if it really means just a, a wall of homes two or three stories tall versus say a condo or even a quadplex or something like that is, is the biggest clarification that I'm really looking for, for things.
Okay, thanks. We'll answer that in a few minutes. Anybody else over here want to comment? If not, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Second. Thank you. Question? No? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Thank you. All right. So houses near Corral, we don't know yet. Let's take a quick look. Is the corral too far away for sewer? You know?
Uh, no, it's not, but I guess regardless of the rezone, you know, the. The location of the corral isn't really impacted here or there, whether it's rezoned R four or R five.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like whatever, whatever you did, it would get back that far in effect. Although there's a nice tree buffer, it looks like along the north side. Okay. And then. Mika, could you comment on R four versus R five?
Sure. So R four and R five are very similar as far as the dimensions that are permitted for, for general housing. So our zoning districts are residential zoning districts built on each other from R three, R four, R five. And so the, the minimum sizes required for single family are, are the same. And then for, for two family are for layers on top of R three and just kind of adds that same dimensions. Our five has the same dimensional requirements for single family and two family, but allows for multifamily. So that means apartments would be permitted. They, we still have a height limit, so it's still thirty five feet. Yep, or two and a half stories. So they wouldn't be tall apartments that they were permitted. They also allow more like what the development on the south side recently where it's the attached townhomes. So instead of just having a duplex townhome, you can have three or four, which I think is more the intent of this plan. But as you know, once you've rezoned, you could have that. Now that's a little bit of a mixed bag when you're talking about something like apartments. We don't have a lot of those. We haven't done those in a long time. If that were to happen in a location though, one of the advantages of the apartments is that they're clustered a little bit closer together. So sometimes that can allow you a little bit more open space yet. But that just all depends on the site plan. So yes, you could have apartments. Site plan review would probably, I expect that you would require things like buffers and, and whatnot. And yeah, the dimensional differences aren't, aren't significant.
Yeah. So I, I was just looking here for R five, the square footage per unit is four thousand five hundred.
Correct.
That'd be two units in that forty five hundred.
No, that would be, I mean, that there has to be forty five hundred square feet of land area for each one unit on the, on the parcel. And then it depends on what type of development is as far as what subtractions you have. You know, there's not going to be, the maximum is not going to be on this parcel because you have stormwater considerations. There's a creek that runs through it. There's, there's all those subtractions, but yeah, as far as that, where that's square footage of the parcel per unit.
Did we? I don't remember seeing, do we have? Can we do quick math? Or do we have a number on what we think the maximum, but it'll be less than that is?
Two hundred and twenty.
Two hundred and twenty?
Hey, what was, what was the two, I'm sorry, I missed the, the number. What was two twenty?
That's twenty two point seven five acres divided by forty five hundred square feet per unit.
Got it.
So that, that, and I should say, like, I always hesitate to get that number because, you know, I was just saying how in the city of Holland, they don't have a maximum, but you have to get all the, they're not, they're not building thousand.
Right.
You know, unit, because you have all these other considerations. So that's a little bit misleading, but that, that's the break, you could break down.
Plus our thirty five foot limit is two and a half. It's a two story with a forty five degree inch, I think. So it's not, it wouldn't be a towering five story or something like that to answer that question. Okay. Questions? Comments?
Yeah, I had, I had one. I, by the way, the, the member of the commission who was confused about low density, high density was me. So thanks, Mika, for not calling me out on that. So I can understand why it was confusing as well. We had that conversation this week and, and I had the, the question I think Mr. Westbrook asked was the same one that I was going to ask, which was, was there a kind of a strategic rationale between R four and R five? And it sounds like it was just kind of a miscommunication on that. On that, on the, in terms of how there's, how the zoning districts are set up versus what you need to be planning to use this for.
I think this is pretty well presented in our future land use map. It is zoned as high density. And so that's the long-term plan. And the question that comes up and correctly if I'm wrong is, is this the time? Right? Is there some reason that we should wait? Yeah, long-term, we want to do that, but it's not time yet, or it's the wrong situation or something, or if not, is this the time to, to rezonate?
So it's part of the master plan. I, I don't see why there would be any reason to not move forward.
Okay, thank you.
I agree. And as far as is it time? I, I think yes, I mean, it really is overall compared to what's surrounding it. It is info, which is another thing that we were focused on. So I think it makes sense as well as the overall needs for housing.
Exactly. One thing I would. Just to remind people, we should, you know, this is a development, we're going to need tree buffers around it. There are lots of trees. It should be easy to make a buffer. In our tree ordinance, we don't have a dimension. Would, would be nice to have and that ordinance maybe should be revisited at some time. But keep that in mind. What is that dimension going to be? Right? The only thing that I would add to the dimension, because we talked about it, is where there are tree surveys where we can actually see what trees are keeping and not keeping. That survey has always been incredibly helpful. Yeah, I didn't drive all the way and I drove partly into driveway because there was a car there. It's like, okay, it didn't, I didn't see any. You know, this size tree does. It looks like that maybe was farmed up to thirty or forty years ago. I'm guessing the trees were big ones or maybe that size. While it gets. That will come up. When they come in with a plan. Okay, any further discussion, questions?
Uh, well, I can, if you'd like me to make a motion.
Yeah, I would like to have a motion at some point.
I'd make a motion that, that will send the request be recommended for approval to the board.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? I have one thing, which is our staff has gone through the rezoning criteria and I think doing a good job of covering all the questions. I would say we should accept the staff's analysis. And with that. Let's call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Carry on. Thank you. I look forward to a nice development, although I probably won't be involved. Done, so?
I think term limit next month.
Oh.
One more.
All right. Uh, to the next item, which is other business and announcements. Carrying on with. A little exchange there. Next month is my last. Month, we have put out an ad for interviews. Find my replacement. So if you know somebody who would be good. Send them down.
So who's living? Yeah, let them know.
But we'll have a good bunch of interviews. You know, the, the question, somebody asked me this question. I think it's, it's a one-year requirement being a resident of Park Township, but what if they're short of that one year?
I don't remember. I don't remember that in the bylaws, so.
I remember seeing one year in the ad.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I would say, wait, there'll be a couple, Mr. Ead will be term limiting off next year. So there will be other opportunities.
Good to keep a list of folks that are interested.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so this one person I know has a sustainability background and I thought it would be incredibly helpful since sustainability is a part of what we talked about in this community. So.
Yeah.
Yes, you can think things, housing and environmental and A. Okay. The next thing is that you all that zoning and the armed toolkit. It looks really well put together. I struggle reading through the introduction because of grammatic errors. I just stop in my tracks when I see those. But it looks like a good. A good tool to move forward with. You came up with it, so if you would introduce a room.
Sure. So as, as we've talked a lot about, we have multiple mandates as part of the, or priorities, I should say, as part of the master plan. One is around the broad need for housing, not just within Park Township, but within Ottawa County, within the state of Michigan and nationally. So to kind of help, one of the things we found is from a zoning perspective, there are some things that limit the ability to build certain types of homes and, and a lot of that is considered what's called middle housing. And those are homes that kind of fall between a single family detached home and multifamily homes. So it could include accessory dwelling units, things like being able to convert the upper level of a garage into space that could be rented out. That type of a thing, but it includes a lot of other things as well. So one of the things that I think a lot of the townships are wrestling, where they're just trying to figure out, and I think we can look around and see how townships nearby us are handling it right now, is what does that look like for us? How do we try to address that as a township? I think, you know, one thing, again, the multiple priorities we have, and we just talked about agriculture, sustainability, housing, multiple things that I think are really important and we're going to be wrestling with those going forward in terms of how we manage those priorities, but. A really cool toolkit was put together by the American Planning Association and then the Michigan chapter of that group kind of overlaid what's happening within Michigan. And I think fundamentally, again, it is part of our master plan, but you know, the background is, is a great need for housing. There's a lot of changes in household dynamics and within Michigan, fifty five percent of the households right now are two people or less. So you have a lot of singles, people that are moving into households, couples, many that are aging, but want to age in place. So there's a lot of different dynamics that are coming into play. You also have, I mean, one of the biggest factors right now is cost, both for builders and also for, for homeowners, of people looking to become homeowners. So one of the things that we'll be talking about a lot over the next, I'm sure, number of years is going to be, what does that look like for Park Township? How do we participate? What's the right fit from the housing? What's the right fit from a housing standpoint? How does that, how do we encourage those types of things that make sense? And, you know, again, I guess what it looks like for us is the most important piece. If you look at, as an example, Holland Charter Township, they're going in deep on apartments right now, we've seen a lot of apartment growth. And that supports workforce, workforce housing, which is really important, because we have a lot of people that would love to live here and want to live here, but they also have to have jobs. And Holland Charter Township, I think for folks that are not quite ready to be homeowners but need a place to live, are addressing that from an apartment standpoint. I think, you know, the ag preservation versus development is gonna be something that we'll be looking at probably monthly forever. We, we found, we learned, I think, from residents that, that both of these things are very important, the agricultural element of Park Township, not only from an economy standpoint, but also from an aesthetics perspective, was really important to residents. So I think, you know, one of the things that we're seeing right now from a cost standpoint, and this isn't gonna change, labor, lumber, land, and laws, and laws is really where the zoning piece comes into play. I've seen, I, I'm gonna admit, I've not read through the hundred and eighty-six page zoning ordinance that we have in Park Township. It's and, I know you're shocked. I understand it. But it was six hundred and sixty-six sections on those hundred and eighty-six pages, so. And I'm not saying that they're not what they should be, but we know that some of that is dated, and at some point in time, it's gonna need to be reviewed. And for the types of housing that the determination is, we really need to have here when we start thinking forward, we need to make sure that the zoning ordinance also supports that. So what we have in the zoning reform toolkit is, it's really a plan that has been put together by a lot of people that are in the planning space on a US basis. And then the folks in Michigan have taken that, that overview of what, what it looks like here. And they've put fifteen different tools that really, as they say, expand housing choice and supply, but it gives you things to think about as you're, as you're kind of evaluating what that looks like in your township or in your city. So it's a really, I think it's an excellent piece that they put together, it's got a great overview, but it's also very detailed when you start to get into the nuts and bolts. But I think it'll be, as we start to kind of jump into this in the future, this is gonna be a tool that will be useful for us, so.
It's, it's well worth it, I couple of things I want to point, I think they're actually, they say fifteen, but I think they're actually fourteen.
Really?
Yeah, they even have a table that only shows fourteen.
Maybe it's a type, one of the ways you mentioned.
You won't know it if you usually don't hit, what, page nine, there's a graph that shows housing price versus income.
Yes.
Housing costs have gone up and incomes went down, so if I may, we have to do what we can do at our level, but the real problem is income declines.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, that's a big issue.
Yeah.
And so one of the things that I look at, it's nice to have apartments, but if you can have places that people can buy, sometimes apartments are the right time in your life. And sometimes people want to buy a build wealth, which in this country is typically real home. So if, I don't know what we can do to encourage that, but that would be an issue that I would stick to. The other one, that page two, I didn't read every word in that, there are a lot of words. But the one I mentioned earlier was collapsing zones, I think. And, and the kind of make more of a mix of high density and low density within the same development, so, so it's not like oh, over there are the manufactured homes, and then the apartments, and then the duplexes, and then the single family. And there the point shall be. I think that's really worth thinking about. Maybe I don't know, more of a more unified social situation.
I agree with that, but there's some stigma against, you know, if I, I build a half a million dollar home with all the trimmings, and then I've got a duplex next door to me, what does it do for values?
Right, right, and that's, they discuss that a lot in here, the whole that, all the zoning ordinance are aimed at single-family homes. And everybody complains about property values, so, you know, I don't want that kind of building that person next to me. So that's, that's a big part of it to look at too, but maybe there's a way.
Definitely.
Okay, has that any other? Because, Laura?
Oh, go ahead, please, Len.
So I have a question, so with this information, how do we interact with our zoning board, how do we take that, because I mean, how do we stay connected and unified on that, because we can have a perspective, they can have a perspective, and so, you know, it seems as though it's a big enough topic that we need to understand that, and then the other thing that I think we need to understand is we, I think you said that after the last master plan, we were re-engage with, with farmers and agriculture, and really understand what their concerns are, what their needs are. I feel like I need to, it feels like we need to re-engage on an agriculture standpoint, really understand that, and then understand that with this, and they're not done independently, so I would just suggest that I would look at it more holistically rather than just one set time.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
I think when you look through it, it'll give you ideas of how we approach that, okay? Word, anything?
Um. We had a special meeting last week where we voted to go ahead and submit a proposal for purchase of the old Coast Guard Station. My understanding is the offer was accepted, and we're moving forward with a purchase of one point four million dollars.
That's exciting, and that's
That is, what's even more exciting is we've already decided that the rest of the COVID funds, I don't know what they're called. To the tune of, yeah, to the tune of eight hundred thousand would be put towards that purchase, and then additionally, was it Mr. Spohoff that did the talking? With regard to Representatives, Roger Victory and Nancy DeBoer took it up to the state level, and they have agreed to go into state funding to supply several hundred thousand dollars as well, so in the end, Park Township will win all the way around with regard to the funding for it. It's been jokingly called Fire Station Three, now would I think we can come up with a better name than that.
And I assume that we'll be in cooperation with city and other townships and stuff, for water safety.
That is correct. Yeah, that would be the main focus of that building, will, it's gonna be staffed for water safety. But there will be, I think it's gonna be divided three ways, Park Township. And I assume that Coast Guard will park their boat there on busy weekends, and also with the calendar, yeah.
Sure.
I keep looking at Nico ten.
Sure, yeah, I don't know all the details, I think the Idaho County Sheriff's Department, we're in divisional, probably, there, not sure.
Super.
Yes. Very good.
And this one right here?
He's had enough meetings. So, um, one thing I just wanted to, to point out, I had printed out from that zoning toolkit, this one page for you. In talking to Tom and Dave, I think that's probably one of the areas that we'll be looking at sooner rather than later, the ADUs, there's a lot of analysis that we can do, and a lot of, you know, trying to evaluate what needs we have and what we'd like to see in Park Township. And so there, there's gonna be a lot of process involved, but ADUs are something that's risen to the surface, both as there's a desire to do it, and I can say as staff with the phone calls that we're receiving, I've noticed a marked shift just in the few years that I've been here, as far as inquiries that we're getting about ADUs. People, kids are staying, kids are staying home longer, you know, well into their twenties. And older people, I was talking to somebody recently who said we would have, we were looking for a house for mom that was really close by, and we couldn't find one, so we have to figure out how to add on a house in a way that, that we can have there close by, so we're seeing a lot more multi-generational living than we've seen in the past, and so this is one of the tools that, yeah, I mean, there are more than, there are more than one person on this table that that's, that's true of, so that's something that's that we're seeing more in the community, so ADUs seem like a good way to address that, and, and a kind of a gentle way to do it, so. Just take a look at that, you could do some Googling, I'll probably send out some more resources, I don't know that we'll necessarily be taking it up next month, but just start letting it percolate, because that's one of those, there are a lot of different configurations of ADUs, they can look a lot of different ways, you can ask a lot of different questions as far as size and location, should they be everywhere, only certain lot sizes, only certain neighborhoods, there are just, there are a lot of different considerations to that, so just kind of get the juices flowing on that, and listen to the stories around you, you know, when you're talking to people, talk to them about what their stress points are when it comes to housing and, and whatnot.
Yep, I'll, I'll agree with you, and I was one of those individuals for the past four or five years, I've been looking in this area for something that had, where my parents could move in and we'd be on the same property, and there is nothing.
Well, yeah, I'll comment also, when I, people talk ADUs, I always think of detached. You know, house on the property, but, you know, the way they're not here is in the basement, upstairs, next door, over the garage, whatever. And we have, we have a lot of, but the single-family homes can't be double-family homes, you're not supposed to rent out your upstairs, well, that's a pretty easy place to start, open on some buildings, I'm sure people do rent out.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that I think I'll, I'll bring to, which is interesting, again, fruit of the short-term rental and going into the old zoning ordinances is just to see what kinds of things, there were a lot of different housing types that were permitted, even, even thirty, forty years ago, that aren't permitted anymore, so those could be interesting places to start conversation too, because we still have them present in the community, some of them are still, are still there, so it'd be interesting to look at.
Thirty years, thirty years ago, when I was on the planning commission.
Oh, my.
I'll see out of an discussion, and not naming names or particular things, but there are kinds of housing people didn't want, and so there were rules in the ordinance on roof pitch and things to try to eliminate certain kinds of housing that we don't want that around here. So I don't know what happened with things like that, the interrupt or whatever, but.
The state got involved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I think the township has historically tried to be exclusive.
Yes. One other update on the ZBA and the short-term rental progression, so the ZBA had their discussion meeting Monday, it's been a long week, it was just Monday, I thought it was last week, and I was really impressed with how well they had done their homework, I thought this could be a long conversation, and they talked for about an hour. They had, I had a member come into my office with a spreadsheet ahead of time, was like, okay, this is what I've looked at, this is what I've seen, I looked, I read your stuff, I read their stuff, just had to put it aside, and I kind of looked at it, and so there were members who did that, they really, really spent a lot of time on this ahead of time before the meeting, so. The, what they did is something that's similar to what you'll often do for, sometimes with an ordinance or with a PUD, they said, this is, this is our consensus decision, please take it away and write it up, and then bring it back to us to either amend or reject or approve or whatever it is, so Dan is working on that, he's going to be doing that, which I'm thrilled about. So there were four questions that were asked by the applicant, and I'll go out of order and go in chronological order, which is how the ZBA looked at it. The nineteen sixty-three ordinance, they determined that tourist homes were the closest cousin, or the most, the, the thing that would be most like a short-term rental, I thought, a short-term rental that could fall under tourist home, because one of the questions is obviously the language, short-term rental only appeared a few years ago, so, you know, fifty years ago, that clearly wasn't in the ordinance. So short-term rental tourist home, they were looking primarily, they kind of boiled it down to compensation and transient nature of the use, and those were the reasons what, what distinguished it from being a single-family home. But that, that, that tourist home then was permitted in Residence District B, which doesn't really correlate to any of our current residence districts, it changed significantly in nineteen seventy-four, so. But there are tourist homes permitted in, in, in that section in nineteen sixty-three. Nineteen seventy-four, they indicated, I mean, that, that went away, and so at that point, short-term rentals could be potentially considered in PUDs, as they were specifically allowed, like, when they were named, and motels, that those were the two correlates for nineteen seventy-four, so that's kind of the contours of their decision, there were other, two other questions, one was on the question of whether the ordinance was unconstitutionally vague, because mainly it didn't talk about short-term rentals, and they determined that it didn't appear to be unconstitutionally vague on its face. However, that's not a question that the ZBA has the authority to answer, so the ZBA, like the planning commission, receives its authority through the state, so most of what we do here is through the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, is the state gives you the authority to make these decisions for the ZBA, it's Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and it says, this is what the ZBA can do, determining constitutionality isn't one of those items, and so they made a couple of comments on it as far as why they didn't really think it was unconstitutionally vague, but said this is really outside of our purview. And that was the same thing for the other question, and this is a little bit more legalese type of question, it's a question of estoppel, and so estoppel basically means you were, you, you were confusing and you told people different things, so this is where the claims that staff were telling people that things were, that this was permitted, where that argument comes in saying, as a result of that, then you can't enforce your ordinance anymore. But that's not, that typically isn't the case in a municipal setting, and the reason is, the example that I gave at that meeting was that, for example, if someone comes with a, an application for a zoo, well, a zoo isn't permitted, but we used to have a zoo, and I think zoos are cool, so I'm like, sweet, yes, you can do that, I don't have the authority to do that, even if I say yes, and the township isn't bound by my reckless behavior, and it may not be reckless behavior, I might be very confused and think that a tiger is a cat, because it says cats are okay, and is this a mess, I, I don't know, it's a cat, yes, you're allowed to have that, if, you know, if I make that mistake, so whether it's intentional, whether it's unintentional, whatever it is, that kind of undercuts the rulemaking authority of the township board, and the elected officials and appointed officials, if staff can overrule that through our actions, so that's generally where that goes. There are possibly some properties that will have estoppel claims, but those are also things that are determined based on the facts of the case on an individual basis and in the courts, so similarly, that's something that the ZBA doesn't have the authority to do, so. That's the, kind of the contours of where that landed at the next meeting, hopefully, I haven't been able to touch base with Mr. Martin, he has also had jury duty and busy, so hoping to have that on the May fifth agenda, that's, that's the intent. And then that would be, then that would be the official vote on that, which would, at this point, wrap up the formal parts of the short-term rental cases in, in Park Township, so.
Couple odd items, just, I know we got a note from Dave Cockinall that he wouldn't be here, I didn't see anything from Dennis.
Not that I remembered.
So make a note in a minute. And one other thing that struck me while she was talking short-term rentals is, if we start allowing ADUs, or especially detached ones, it's not so much, if we start allowing rentals, then we're going to have to have some kind of way to inspect, you know, safety, health, all that kind of stuff, licensing. So that goes with it too.
Yes, unfortunately.
Anything else?
Well, I was just gonna comment, I, I find it a little interesting, obviously, even with long-term rentals, Park Township doesn't have anything on the books, but our neighbors do. You know, Holland Township has certain requirements, which I do think makes sense, because you obviously would not want to rent a place that is unkept, unsafe. And, you know, certainly as we have individuals in properties today, you know, having the ordinance to fall back on is another thing that can certainly assist residents, should they find themselves in a situation where things may not be resolved to a, a safety perspective.
Right, City of Holland is?
City of Holland does, Holland Township does, and, and I, I really think it is something, you know, as City Hall does, uh, Holland Township does, and and I I really think it is something, um, you know, as individuals are are renting. That does assist them greatly in ensuring that not only they have available housing, but they have safe housing. Um, especially, you know, if you're looking at fire code and, um, that sort of thing.
We'll have to see ordinance proposal on the uh, menu next month.
That's a board, that's a board question, there's a, I I rented for a long time, and I saw things. Landlords too, uh, there's a pretty significant cost that comes to that as well, so that's where that cost benefit comes from is entirely a a board question.
What, I guess one question I had, you said the um, the pre-sixty-three, um, or from sixty-three, pre-seventy-four was, uh, tourist homes?
Mm-hmm.
All right, there, is there grounds for people that were renting before then to be able to, is that still an open opportunity?
Yeah, so then if the ZBA. Um, affirms kind of what their, what their direction was at the last meeting, um, then, once that's wrapped up, individual owners who think that they have a claim. Would be able to submit that, and um, we'd have to talk, I have an idea of what the process is, I don't wanna say it out loud, because we have to sit down, but. There would be then a process of evaluation and saying, does this meet the requirements from nineteen sixty-three?
Yeah, but that would have to be done, as you said, individually.
Yes, yeah, because what what you're looking at then is an existing non-conforming use, and so in zoning, um. If you are already doing something, and we change the zoning code, you're allowed to continue doing it, kind of world without end, you can just keep doing it. As long as you don't change any, what you're doing, uh, as long as it's an existing permitted use when the zoning ordinance changes. So you can't, you know, you can't change, you can't expand it, you can't do a bunch of other things, but you can keep doing what you're doing. So that would, we'd be looking to confirm that they were doing that, and that they're continuing to do what they're doing.
Yeah, grandfathering, also known as legal, that can form.
Yes.
Anything else?
If there's nothing else, I'll move to close the meeting.